He said yes?
Call meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for the acceptance of the minutes of the October 8th, 2024 meeting. I moved in second discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum for this evening. No one? Just want to make sure that they saw. You're good? No one? Alright. Alright, we'll move on to presentations for this evening. Call up to the podium Superintendent Wiles. Vince Napoli, Capital Project.
Good evening, everybody. Is this on? Yeah, okay. So, this evening, we, as we promised the last meeting, we're going to be sharing some information regarding the upcoming Capitol Improvement Project referendum that will go before the public on Tuesday, December 3rd. So, we're gonna go through some slides. I just want to point out a couple of other dates. On election night, November 5th, we are going to be doing tours. We've gotten some requests from the community to see the improvements that have been made already over the years with regard to the current Capitol project we're in and previous Capitol projects. So, we'll be doing tours on November 5th at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, and 7 o'clock. So, our parents and the community can come in and tour the building, see some of the changes, and really note maybe what some of the upcoming changes are going to be. We'll be putting out some information on our website and also on Facebook for links to sign up for those. We get an idea of how many people are coming on those evenings, so that'll be November 5th. On November 7th, we will be providing another presentation on the Capitol project for anybody in the community that would like to come. And as we get more questions, we're putting together a Q&amp;A. You can find that on our website as we get them. When you get to the website, the first top of the website, not the title pages, but it says "Information here about Capitol projects." We'll be updating that over the next couple of months, so that you could see what's coming. So, I'm going to start, and I want to talk about this project, which is themed Success, Safety, and Sports. We're gonna start talking about, start by talking about what our priorities were when we put this project together. So, we want to increase the health, safety, and security in our buildings. We want to enhance our athletic fields, provide an outdoor education space at the elementary school. We're talking about that space being right outside of the new library that we have and having an outdoor classroom and an outdoor space. And when, if people do choose to come and do the tour, and you look at our new library, it's very impressive. When we had the Hall of Fame tour, when we've had alumni come in, it's just there is new impressive space down in the elementary school. And we're going to be adding to that. We address the highest priority of infrastructure updates that were identified in the latest building condition survey. If you hear BCS, that's what you'll, that's what we're referring to. We're gonna continue to work on improving energy efficiency, complying with the, with fire regulations, safety regulations, American with Disabilities Act, and other required building codes. So, what are going to be the safety, security, compliance upgrades? So, the first thing we're gonna do, and I have a few pictures we're gonna go through. We're gonna be replacing the 1980s-era public announcement system and phone systems to ensure functionality and improve safety in emergencies. So, the current PA system we have and the current phone system we have are very antiquated. Everything's moving to digital, voice over, the internet, phone systems. And we've been to other districts. We visited Menasink and saw really a state-of-the-art PA system and phone system that really helps with the safety and security in the buildings also. We're going to continue to replace aged doors, interior and exterior, and the hardware to meet current safety, security, and fire rating standards. So, I just want to make a comment about some of this work, because you might go back to the last project and say, "Oh, they did this. They're just asking for more money to, you know, they, we budgeted for this. What happened to all that money?" Well, we did budget for windows and doors. And we had that project approved in 2019. So, let's think about, you know, the five years that's passed, six years by the time we get to this. We've seen inflation. We've seen materials not being accessible for construction projects that have really skyrocketed the prices. So, things that we had budgeted for came out double, sometimes triple, so we had to scale back. But the windows still need to be replaced. Doors still need to be replaced. When we do the tour and you look at the new doors in the elementary school and you have the opportunity to see them, we have just about all the doors in the elementary school done. But now, we want to work on the 712 building, so we can upgrade the doors and the hardware in those buildings. We also have to replace aged water service, original to the junior, senior high school building from the Village of Allenville. So, we're responsible for the water connections from our building to the village infrastructure. And we know that we have not done any work on that probably in 50, 60 years. We know that those pipes are definitely, even though they're steel and they are made of other material, they rust over periods of time. And we want to be proactive, taking care of that before we have a break in a water main and we have to rip everything up. So, in addition to that, we're gonna continue to look at our ventilation and air exhaust systems in identified areas for air quality improvement. We're pretty lucky with the ESA funds that we got or the ARP funds we got from the COVID relief. We used a lot of those funds to upgrade our HVAC. We need to continue to do that. So, I just want to say when people say, "Well, they did that already." You know, this is a huge building. It's a huge house. I'm gonna just put that in perspective. And you know, for homes or for commercial properties, it's never ending to upgrade and fix. So, it's really important that we stay ahead of that. So, we're really being less reactive and more proactive in what our, how we're taking care of the building. And I, well, I'm gonna digress a little bit. Why now? Why this project? You know, we might have other priorities. Why are we not focusing on academics? And I just want to be clear, we are focusing on academics. The board's been very purposeful about adding supports, and we will always do that. But we cannot allow the facility that the kids come to school in and learn here for, you know, six, seven hours a day or participate in extracurricular activities fail. So, it's important that we take a balanced approach and we continue to look at this building and the envelope of the building, the interior of the building, and not only the building, the athletic facilities that I'm gonna talk about in a few minutes. And we're also gonna be upgrading and installing handrails and emergency lighting to meet ADA and code requirements. So, this is a picture of the public address and phone system. We've moved this system around a few times. And every time you move it, it's really old. And we've had some issues with the PA and the phone system during the last Capitol project. And we're not, we're on our last legs with it, right? So, you can hear that a lot. We're on our last legs with it. This has to be done. And we'll talk about and show more of the cost of this. But this is not just those panels. It's new wiring to every classroom in the whole district, into different areas. We're going to make sure that the gyms and the outside facilities have PA systems that you can hear and have them measured. So, that's a picture of that. Indoor, old doors with large glass windows that can't be secured against intruders. If you take a look at the new doors we put in the elementary school, they're heavy doors, and there are, there are thin windows. You still can see in, but you don't have all of this glass where the whole class is exposed. And we are going to upgrade them, so they're up to the fire rating standards. Exterior doors, if you go through the building and you take a look at exterior doors, there are doors that are very old. We've been replacing them. We have replaced a few, but there's still many others that need to be done. The remaining aged, inefficient windows. So, we have, not sure, this is, this is the elementary school? So, this is the elementary school. We have some windows that we're picking and choosing in this project to be done, but we're not going to hit all of those windows that we were going to. So, we're going to really need to prioritize in this project for next summer and then move into hopefully the next project and continue the window replacement. Infrastructure. So, we're gonna continue to replace, rebuild, and look at the missing or deteriorated bricks and the masonry work on the building. And we started doing that. We have some additional work that'll be done this summer, but we, there's so much brick in this building that if you look at it, we say the bricks have to be pointed. The cement around the bricks, the mortar, not cement, the mortar around the bricks is deteriorated, and we have to take care of the, of that. We plan on replacing seven end-of-life electrical panels in the junior, senior high to provide increased capacity and improve service delivery. We did this about 10 years ago. The more technology and the more, you know, devices that we use, the more draw we have on the electrical capacity that has to be replaced. We're also gonna be replacing the original folding part, folding doors in the partitions, in the gymnasiums and in the senior, in the senior high cafeteria. So, we have these folding doors. We took care of the classrooms. Oh, I'm talking into the mic. We, that's why Vince is here, to make sure I talk into the mic. We have replaced some of the folding partitions in the classrooms, but we'll be replacing the ones in the gymnasiums and the senior high cafeteria. So, here are some pictures. This, this is just an example of the concrete masonry crumbling. The picture on the top left, we're hoping to get this done this summer, but there's other work around that needs to be done also. This is a good example of the brick work that has to be replaced. And these are the old damaged folding partitions in the gymnasiums, both elementary, junior, senior high, and also the senior high cafeteria. Physical education, athletic field, and outdoor learning spaces. So, I just want to preface this by saying, you know, we've been having these discussions about our athletic facilities, about our physical education facility where kids go out and they participate in PE during the school day, and also participating in extra, in our sports and what those facilities look like. So, I just want to say respectfully, this is not a project to make everything look better. This is a project to really replace some aged infrastructure. And I'm gonna show you some pictures that we have from a drone that'll show you what the condition is looking from the sky down on the fields. So, the plan here, if it's approved, is to reconstruct the existing eight-lane track, excuse me, six-lane track to an eight-lane track, all-weather track. Relocate the discus, shot put, and jumping field events. Replace natural grass athletic field with an all-weather artificial turf lined for football, soccer, and field hockey. Install new grandstand bleachers with seating for 800 spectators, including a new integrated press box. Upgrade the aged field lights for track football and soccer with energy-efficient brighter LED models to improve lighting, who also are more efficient with regard to electricity use. Replace the aged football scoreboard. Improve baseball and softball fields, including new backstops, dugouts, bullpens, batting tunnels, scoreboards, and bleachers. I'm gonna stop there. Some of you might remember that this is included in the existing project, some of the work on the fields. It is not to the depth that we want to see on our fields. And if you have been out to a baseball game or a softball game in the back of the school, you can see what the conditions of the fields are, and I'm gonna show you that in a moment. Rehabilitate the natural, grass soccer and field hockey, the existing fields, to improve playing surfaces, address drainage issues, and provide for proper orientation to the sun. So, you might say, "Why are they gonna do that if they're doing a turf field, right?" We want to try to keep as much as we can here, but we still need practice fields. Remember, we still have modified teams that play, and those fields have to be brought up to, you know, a better condition. In addition, as I said earlier, we're going to construct an outdoor education space in the elementary school. We're going to expand the existing weight room into a fitness center, increasing occupancy and providing additional cardio equipment. We are planning on partnering with the town. I'm gonna talk about this at length here in a minute. To relocate the pool house to the shallow end of the pool complex and expand it for dual use as a community, as community restrooms, concessions, multi-purpose facility down there. So, the plan for this, if you can envision the old pool house, which is on its last legs, and if you're looking from the building down to the pool, it's on the right side. A new facility would be built on the left side of the pool. And that would double for a concession stand for, during the school year, bathrooms for during the school year and in the summertime. And we'd be able to have concession, and we'd be able to use it, the town would be able to use it, to have students change in changing rooms for their summer program, right? So, it's gonna be a multi-purpose building. Recently, the town of Orworsen received a swims grant from DASNY. And if I remember correctly, it was for about $3,662,000. Nope. It's more than that now. That's the DASNY part. It's about 4.7 million with the town's contribution. You know, their, their contribution they have to make. We're in the process of working with the town to request additional funding from DASNY to see if any additional funding's available for them to probably, or to work on leveraging additional funds to go towards the building. If that happens, right? And there are rules, and we have to make sure we're following all of their rules, we might be able to repurpose some of the money that we have budgeted for that pool house for other improvements that, or additional improvements that we have. So, we are working probably weekly with the town, trying to see how they could leverage the money, but they have money to fix the pool. The pool needs to be fixed. We've been talking to a couple of companies. I actually was at a conference the last couple of days, and I spoke to a company that puts pool liners in. Lot of new technology that could be paid for with that grant. Kind of very exciting. I also spoke to a company that has done the turf fields for both Rondout and Pine Bush. And they are actually on a pseudo-state contract. So, we will be able to utilize a vendor that we, that has some experience in doing this and doing it well. In addition to that, if you go out into the back of the building now, picture for graduation, or you're walking down to a baseball game, we plan on having added, adding paved walkways to connect the athletic fields and to make them ADA accessible, right? So, if someone's here with a wheelchair, you don't have to walk on, or you're walking, you don't, gonna walk on uneven, you know, ground and that will connect all of those areas to the restrooms that we plan on putting in the, that multi-purpose building. And we also are constructing a new 1,500-square-foot building for physical education and athletic equipment and other district storage use. I'm gonna show you a, an overview on where we're gonna put that. So, this is the proposed fitness center. It does take part of, it does take the existing room and expands it into the existing music room we have now. We'll be relocating the music room. And these are some schematics that draft that we have. And these will be on the website. We also have them on our, on what a fitness center could look like after we go through the design process, or will look like. Okay, this is a big point of contention for everybody, right? So, we have this existing press box concession stand. It's the tower, and it is very old and antiquated, and it's on its last legs. So, this would be replaced. These would be replaced. First, like the bottom part of the press box would go into the multi-purpose building by the pool. The top part of it would go behind new bleachers in a real press box that you would see at other schools. So, these are our existing fields. When you look at them, you could see the track. You can see the area right by the baseball field, and you can see how the, the field over periods of time have eroded, right? And to fix them, you're, we're really gonna have to dig them up and relay them out. And that's, that's the plan here. This is a, from a drone, this is the existing field hockey field. You can see it needs work. All of this will be relayed out. And this is what the composite athletic fields will look like. So, I'm just gonna take this so I can point to it. I don't know if everyone can see this at home. Okay, I'm not gonna trip over wires tonight. So, you have, just for a point of reference, and we didn't get this fixed. We don't have a middle school. We have a junior high school, elementary. This is the back of the building. You have the new artificial turf, new eight-lane. You can track along and see where the new walkways are. You can see how the fields and the, the baseball and softball fields have been turned a little bit. And this slide will show you exactly what I talked about with regard to all of this. We are also looking at, we can squeeze a little bit more money out of the referendum to put a lot more lighting in the back, because during athletic events, and even, even in the evenings, when people come to the back of the school, whether it to be, you know, for whatever event, a football event, it's pretty dark between the athletic fields and the buildings. So, we're looking at that. Baseball and softball, the fields will be improved, but we'll also have new backstops, dugouts, bullpens, batting tunnels, scoreboards, and bleachers. The district will be able to host invitationals once the six-lane existing, the existing six-lane track is expanded to eight. So, why turf? So, I got, this question was asked of me at the PTO meeting. So, there was a parent, justifiably so, asking about turf. And then, many years ago, there were some studies that connected them, turf fields to childhood diseases and cancer and all that. And we are providing the research. There'll be links on the, on our website. The materials that are used for artificial turf have come a very, very long way. And more than ever, the research indicates that they are safer than they were when they first came out. So, why do we want to use turf? Long-term maintenance costs, lining, seating, fertilizing, mowing are reduced. There is a maintenance cost about eight to 10 years out, which we have already with our, our track, where you'll have to do some work on that. But since scheduled maintenance is minimal, the availability for student use has increased. So, think about it. Right now, we don't utilize the football field as much as we could, because football's like, you know, with the cleats, it's a lot of wear and tear. We run soccer games out there, field hockey games. It really does impact the, the quality of the field. But with turf, more games can be played out there with less maintenance. Artificial turf is more durable than natural grass, again, eliminating the need for the field to rest between practices and competitions. The need for cancellations due to weather-related field conditions is reduced. Teams can practice on the same type of surface. They compete on it. Other schools in the league, and I'm gonna pause here, because I think this is important. Our students go to other schools, like Rondout, Highland. They'll see a huge change. SPAC and KEL, Liberty. Those schools have upgraded their facilities. And when you go to those facilities and then you come back to our facilities, there's a significant, there's a significant difference. And I'm gonna use this as an example. We put a new cafeteria in the elementary school and a new library. If this passes, we'll have new athletic fields. The access, right, that our students have to those facilities, I look at the cafeteria, and I can't believe we went so long on the old cafeteria we have now. When we look at the facility that the kids eat in or the kids study in in the library, it's the same thing. Why shouldn't our students have, just saying, gotta ask ourselves, do we want our students to have the same, you know, experience that other schools have? So, we want our students to come back here and be able to practice and have access to the same fields that other schools have. The soft smooth first surface does not deteriorate during gameplay, eliminating ruts and divots that can trip athletes. There's no need for pesticides or fertilizers or for gasoline-powered mowers, which can reduce carbon emissions. Artificial turf does not require watering. And Allenville will have the opportunity to host sectional and regional competitions. Shift over to the community pool house. Pool house is on its last legs, we know that. And while we don't use this pool house, we lease it to the town for the use of the pool and the recreation program, we could use that, if it was placed differently, as a multi-purpose room for concessions and bathrooms, so that we don't have to have porta-potties at our games out back. This is what the inside of the building looks like. It's very deteriorated, and it needs to be fixed, as does the steps. It's, we've been, we've been putting Band-Aids on this building for the last 15 to 20 years. What's the funding plan? So, the project, the Capitol project we're putting before the public is $22.3 million. And we plan, we have $2.5 million set aside in a capital reserve that'll offset those costs. We're hoping that the town will be able to offset the costs a little bit more, but we don't know for sure, so we did not count that in. But we're hoping we, we will be able to do that. New building aid, New York State Building Aid to cover the project is about 41.7%. This will be financed over 15 years. That results in a 3.84% tax increase. But I want to be clear, that's not all at one shot. What we do when we have Capitol projects is we often take out a bond anticipation note. Start the work, and we bond later on. And as we do that, we borrow money. We pay some interest on it, but we get aid back on the interest also. And we slowly, over a period of two to three years, ease in the tax, the tax increase with regard to that. So, it's not gonna be 3.84 one particular year. It's gonna be eased in over a period of a few years. And bond payments have to continue for 15 years. That's state-required now that your bond goes out. So, a bond in a school is like a mortgage on a house, right? You can have a 10-year mortgage, 15-year mortgage. We're not allowed to have 30-year mortgages, because by the time you get to 30 years, you will have, you need to have projects in between. What does it mean to the taxpayers? So, in Rochester, if you have a home that's assessed, not market value, assessed at $100,000, that means for the year on that assessed valuation, you will pay $108.20 for the year. That's at the 3.84%. This is in Rochester. That will be about $9 a month. In Mamakating, and this differs because of equalization rates and apportionment rules. We don't make this. This is what the state tells us. And I do have to say, this is based on assessed valuation today. That's all we can do, is, is look at what our numbers are today. Mamakating, it'll be $174.32, which comes out to about $14.53 a year. And in Orworsing, a house, a house assessed at $100,000 would be an $89.65 increase for the year, or $7.47 a month. a month. So again, I just want to caution everyone, this is based on this year's assessed valuation and equalization rates. That definitely can change, will change, changes every year, but this is the best we have right near, now for the predictions. So what does it mean to vote? What's the eligibility to be eligible to vote? You have to be a registered voter in the Ellenville Central School District, just like the budget vote. You have to be at least eighteen years old, a U.S. citizen, a district resident for at least thirty days before the election. The new voter registration deadline is Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, and you can register at the central office with the district clerk Monday to Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty p.m. In-person voting will be here, by paper ballot, on Tuesday, December third, eight a.m. to eight p.m. You can also vote by absentee and mail-in ballots. There's a new process in place in our state to do early voting ballots, where you can, it's not just absentee ballots, you can cast your vote earlier, come get an application, fill out the application, turn the application in, get the ballot, and you can vote prior to that, that vote, and your ballot that's filled out will be held and opened the night of the, the third, when the polls closed. It's really important to tell you that if you're going to vote absentee or by a mail-in ballot, you have to have original signatures on the application, so it can't be faxed. You have to sign it and get it to us. And you can return it to us by mail, or you can walk in with the application and we'll give you your ballot. Or you can even ask someone to pick up your ballot for you and authorize them on the application to pick up the ballot, bring you the ballot, and you can either mail it, or you can give it to the person to return it. Ballot deadlines, November third is the first day to submit completed ballot applications. So you can get an application now, but you can't submit the application till November third to get the ballot. November twenty-sixth, application deadline to receive the ballot by the mail, so that since the vote is the third, we can't accept any more applications after the twenty-sixth of November. December second is the application deadline to pick up the ballot in purpose, in person, that is the day before the vote. And December fifth is the deadline, that day of the vote, is the deadline for returning completed ballots. If you want to learn more about the project, www.ECS.K12.NY.us, right on the front, you'll see Capital Project twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four. Any questions you have that you'd like answered, you can email capitalproject@ECS, again, dot K12.NY.us, or feel free to call Vince Napoli, his phone number's eight-four-five-six-four-seven-zero-one-one-five. For any questions you can think of, and we're taking the questions and we'll be including the questions on a Q and A document, so that people can see what they are. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions that anyone might have?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Vince. We'll move on to reports, information, correspondence, for myself, I have nothing, board membership. No one, student, hey, we see Jack Henry's back with us. Jack, how's the world?
It's the world.
All right. What do you got?
All right, so for happenings, events going on, the, all schools in the district have been participating in the Red Ribbon Week to help prevent the use of drugs. Tomorrow, the college fair will take place in the high school gym for all students, grades seven to twelve. On Saturday, the student council will sponsor their annual Think Pain Cancer Walk at nine a.m. The registration is at eight-thirty in the morning, first come, first served. Tuesday, the fifth election day, the senior class will sponsor the spaghetti supper at five p.m. in the cafeteria. On November sixth, the senior high band choir will perform in the Autumn Concert. For the athletics, the varsity football team has a game on Saturday in Ontario. A win will clinch a home playoff game. The cross-country team has had, will have their M-Hall Championships on the thirty-first at the Hudson Valley Sports Dome in Milton. Both the varsity soccer teams, boys and girls, hosted their senior nights last week. The girls won two-nil, and the boys fell short three to one to Highland. Fundraisers, the class of twenty-twenty-six finished their Gertrude Hawk fundraiser yesterday, and the pancake breakfast at the Elks Lodge will be on Sunday. The class of twenty-twenty-seven completed their holiday catalog on Friday. Spanish Honor Society will be selling Dising's Bakery pies, and the Blue Devils Merchandise Sale is underway. You can buy shirts, hats, and more using the link tinyurl.com/ECSDmerch, or you can use the QR code.
Thank you very much. It's good to have you back. I'll move on to Superintendent Lisa Wiles.
I just have one clarification. One of the slides I put up said December fifth, and it's December third. The vote is Tuesday, December third, and I apologize for that, and we will correct it. But it's December third. That's all I have tonight.
Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli.
I have nothing to report.
Deputy Superintendent, oh, go ahead.
In our packet is, is the report about the cafeteria, and I was delighted to read it. It's a great, it's, it's really, they're apparently doing a wonderful job down there. And it's not only the food, it's the people involved, that they're really creating an environment that's very welcoming, and their menu looks terrific. So I was really glad to, to read that.
Thank you, I'll share that with Debbie Fisher.
Please, thank you.
Danny.
I do have a question regarding the cafeteria. Is there anywhere on our school website where parents can see what the, the food that's being offered, where the ingredients are, and caloretic content?
I will track that down for you, but Whitsons does provide all of the details for all the food that, that we're serving. One of the conversations that I did have with the regional director, as well as, in conjunction with Debbie, because there was some Facebook posts that came out a couple weeks ago about what was being offered in elementary school, and I've asked Whitsons to change their menu online, because right now, when you look at the menu online, you can only see a small snippet of what's being offered in our buildings, as opposed to other districts actually have all of the menu items that are being offered. So for example, if, we always offer salads, that's not readily visible when you look at the menu off of our website. So they, they do have the nutritional content available. Off the top of my head, I don't know how to get to it, but it, but it is there, I have seen it.
I'm going to tell you how to get to it. There is a section under, it looks like a fork and a knife on the website. If you click on that, you'll come to Ellenville Elementary and Ellenville Junior Senior High. If you click on the elementary, if you click on breakfast, you look at view menus, and you go in there, you can look at what's today.
Today is the, so tomorrow is, I can't move this.
So I'm going to tell you that on Tuesday, the first, there was an egg and cheese sandwich that was offered, and that had four hundred and fifty-six calories, seven grams of saturated fat, two hundred and sixty-four milligrams of cholesterol, so the information is on the website. You just go to menus, you click on the menu, and there's, looks like a little green globe right there, and if you, I think it's a globe. If you click on that, it'll give you the nutritional value of each of the menus.
Thank you.
Yep.
How many grams of cholesterol?
I didn't say cholesterol, I said saturated fat.
Phew.
I, a lot.
That's like, heart attack on a plate. All right, we'll move on to Deputy Superintendent Kelly White.
I don't have anything to report this evening.
Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Curriculum, Mr. Scott Prokosh.
Good evening, just update to our, to everyone, we have three current vacancies, two psychologists, one full-time psychologist position, one point four psychologist position, as well as a special education homebound half point five position that we are continuing to post and try to find candidates for.
Thank you. Move on to personnel resolutions for this evening, six point one, winter sports. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following winter coaches be approved for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as follows. Move the list. List has been moved. Second, a discussion. Mr. Burns.
Can I just request that we get an updated roster list as we go along, so that we don't have to make a decision on this without the final numbers?
We'll make sure you get that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, no further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Substitute personnel, upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following substitute personnel be appointed through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Such appointments are contingent upon a district's receipt of fingerprint clearance from the New York State Education Department by no later than forty-five days from date of hire. Move the list. List has been moved. Second, a discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Security attendant, six point three. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that Justin Ramirez be appointed as security attendant at a rate of eighteen dollars, forty cents per hour work.
Some moved.
Second. And moved and second, a discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point four, co-curricular personnel. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that co-curricular personnel is set forth and attached, will be approved at contractual rate, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Such appointments are contingent upon a district's receipt of fingerprint clearance from the New York State Education Department, no later than forty-five days from the date of hire. Move the list. List has been moved.
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point five disciplinary settlement. Be resolved, the Board of Education, the Ellenville Central School District, at the disciplinary settlement with employee number two-zero-zero-five. A copy which shall be placed and filed with the district clerk is hereby approved. So moved. Been moved.
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point six memorandum of agreement. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved the memorandum of agreement between the Ellenville Central School District and the ETS RPA, Teachers' Union, be approved as attached. Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point seven intramural sports. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following individual be approved for intramural sports for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, at a rate of forty-five, forty-seven dollars per hour work, not to exceed twenty-five hours per sport. Been moved. Second, discussion. Mr. Burns.
Yes, I'll just reaffirm my comments that I made in the past, that I think if we're going to build numbers, we need to focus on the lower levels. Especially a sport like wrestling, it's difficult to recruit kids in the high school ages that are new to the sport. So I'd like to ask that we get our athletic director to put more emphasis, again, on that, on those lower levels. Thank you.
So noted. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point eight permanent appointment. Upon a completion, a recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved the appointment of Jessica Tozto. Registered nurse be made permanent following successful probationary period effective November third, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Moved in second, a discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point nine, district clerk stipend. Be resolved, the Board of Education, the Ellenville Central School District, that Marisol Hemp shall receive a stipend in the amount of ten thousand dollars for assuming additional duties during the absence of the secretary to the superintendent during the twenty-four, twenty-five. It's been moved. Second, a discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Policy resolutions for this evening, somebody want to move that?
Move seven-one.
It's been moved. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Student IEPs for this evening?
Move eight-one and eight-two.
It's been moved. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Construction resolutions?
Motion move nine-one and nine-five.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under other, under ten, ten point one, resolve the Ellenville Central School District Board of Education, cast their vote for John Burns for the position of New York State School Boards Association Area Nine Director. So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Ten point two, resolve the Board of Education, Ellenville Central School District, approve the agreement with the State University of New York on behalf of SUNY Courtland.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Ten point three, external audit. Resolve the attached external audit for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year be approved.
Move ten-three.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, mark your calendars, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, November It's been, the, next meeting is November twelfth. And we're going to be looking at a date in November for our annual Board Administrators' Retreat. I'll be discussing that with the superintendent, coming up with some dates, and we'll get back to you on that. Entertain, a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Where adjourn?
All right.